Everybody ready? We're gonna... What's your latest flag? What's your latest... Do the flag.
...in the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna go out of order. I'm gonna call Mr. Savodik first instead. 125 Old Albany Post Road? Yes, okay. Now, let...
Hang on.
Last once meeting, we asked you a few different things, right?
That's correct.
Do you remember what they were?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
One was the... An engineer stamped, signed, approved with my survey with the deck drawn on the house.
Right.
And another thing was...
Yeah, for the...
Names of my...
We got that.
Property owners and stuff like that, and letters if any.
You gave us that.
Okay. The deed with the property record survey?
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
And that was one of the three things.
Okay, great. Is this what you... What you feel is...
Yes, I have the original stamped, and the building inspector has the other.
She has the original stamped copy right there.
Yeah, we asked for six copies. But anyway, kind...
Not with the stamp on it. I was asking for... You said to give me two with the stamped copies.
I did.
And the rest don't have to be stamped, because I could've got as many as you need.
Okay.
Okay?
Who told you that?
Tina.
I did.
Okay.
I made sure... I wanted to make sure we didn't have any more adjournments.
All right, now...
Would you like to see a copy of it? I have one.
No, no, no. She has it, that's fine, but I have a problem with this. I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Okay, what the problem is, let me show you for example. Like, we have a second... Let me make it easier, so I can... See, we have a second thing coming up here, a second application. And this is his plan. This is his survey and everything else like that. Okay? His name's survey. Now, why don't you take a look at that? Okay. This is not that.
With the stamp, you told me...
Yeah, but it doesn't show me... It doesn't show me...
Say I needed this survey. What I was... What I was told specifically from you and everyone else here was that, and I was very redundant on making clear, so I would have to come back again, was that I needed the plan that I submitted earlier with me sketching out on my deed. Oh, not loud?
No.
I'm sorry. I needed that... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, great. I needed that copy that I drew to scale from my... From my survey that I had, the legal survey that's in the county. And I drew my scaled deck, proposed deck, onto it. And you said, "No, it needs to be sealed for an engineer/architect."
Correct.
Copy, the same thing with that. So, I had him draw it up and paid him the money to take care of that, and that is what I submitted. That's engineered with the deck onto it.
Yeah, it's not a deck, it's just a square. Well, let me put it this way. Let's discuss it with you.
It's a rectangle. What copy do you have, sir?
I have this one here. A rectangle, whatever. It's just a...
That's exactly what the deck is. And if you want specifics, let me show you, because if that...
No, let me... Let's start.
I hate that.
Let's restart. I saw you... I saw you the ones you did by hand, and that's fine. That's up to the building inspector. We don't have... That's none of our concern.
But that's the detail, extreme detail compared to what this is.
Right. And that should be on here.
Well, did you see my survey, sir?
Yes, I have it here.
This is the copy of the original survey.
Right, let me see it.
That is no different from what I handed you. Doesn't it have to look like somebody else's survey with detailed drawings of the building and whatnot?
Yeah, but...
Because I gave those approved drawings to the building department of details of the proposed construction.
But on the survey, you don't show the deck, do you? Do you?
That's not the one. The one that you have right there has a signed seal. Do you have a copy of yours?
This one here, is this the one you're talking about? Let's get this straight.
Yes, you see the deck right there?
It's a square. It's a black box.
It's a rectangle, you can see the sizes.
Okay, hold on a second.
And I was told you needed to have the setbacks on it. That's what it is. It's a real simple square, that's all I'm asking for.
It doesn't have the deck setback, that's what the issue is.
It does have the setbacks.
No, actually, it doesn't.
God bless you.
Thank you.
No, it don't. Let me get my copy here. Excuse me, one second, please. Let me get my copy, it's got a seal on it.
No, I have the seal, so we're okay with that.
And again, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll just read the provision that is provided in the town's code that's specific to the requirements for submissions for any variance before the town for a zoning board of appeals. Section 175, 59, subsection B, subsection 2. All applications for variances shall be submitted to the zoning administrative officer at least 10 days before the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, and shall be accompanied by six copies of the plot plan drawn to scale with accurate dimensions showing the location of all existing and proposed structures on the lot. This requirement may be modified for larger properties to show only those existing structures in vicinity of the requested variance, and the rest is not relevant to this...
All right, so it doesn't have to six copies. I... You know, I can understand that, but it doesn't... It doesn't show us...
Sorry, I'm looking for my...
I still see no pistons even on this one.
Right. See, it doesn't show us any kind of setbacks on this.
God bless you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Sure does. Can you take a look at that, see all the setbacks you need right there, what it does mean?
Yeah. Who drew this?
Excuse me?
Who drew this?
The engineer.
Now, who drew this?
Can I see that again, I see which one it is? This is the copy that the engineer drew. This is the same thing.
But the engineer's name is not on it.
Right, but he gave me the one that he gave you with the seal. That's the one that I need to submit, because this...
Who told you that? Engineer? The engineer?
No, you told me...
No.
I was told by Tina and yourselves what to submit, and to the best of my understanding, that was submitted. Now, where is the one with the seal? Do you have the one with the seal in front of you?
That's okay, she has it. It's the same one.
No, but I need to see it, because I have it, but I just can't...
She has it, by the way. We only have the one copied, so...
Thank you very much.
You should've said it doesn't have to setback.
Right.
Now, can you see where it says 20 plus feet, plus minus feet? 22 plus minus feet? You see that?
What? Can you... Wait, let's do it one second. Can you read that again, what you just read? Listen to it carefully.
I understand. Just give me one second, Mr. Chairman.
I heard that. I can't see what's pertaining to what we're talking about in any more detail than I'm trying to get from a simple deck with simple setback measurements.
Of course, it doesn't measure from the deck to the property line and measure it to the house.
And ask for a copy of the plot plan.
No, no, measure it to the deck for the property line, sir.
Mr. Savodik.
Excuse me?
And if I may, it says it needs to... It's a copy of the plot plan drawn to scale with accurate dimensions showing the location of all existing and proposed structures on the lot.
Okay, and that's exactly what that is. If you could see, it's 20 feet plus minus onto the house, sir. That shaded section is the new proposed deck. And in the front of it, because it's on a slight angle, 22 plus or minus feet.
Okay.
Okay? And the existing deck that's there, that's going to be attached to, is 44 plus or minus feet to the property line.
The way this shows...
So, I don't understand what setback you're asking for, sir. Every single one is there.
What? You're gonna give me a chance?
Absolutely.
Okay. The way this shows here, this could be an extension to the house. I have no idea what this is. This is a brown square in a box.
You know what it is, because it goes along with my building permit with my...
You don't have a building permit. If you had a building permit, you wouldn't be here.
What I submitted to building permit, and it gets denied because of the...
Variance.
Because of the difference of the setback.
Correct.
Now, there is a 12-foot wide deck there now into the encroachment area.
Right.
I'm asking for four feet off the house, which... Can I ask anybody else up here? Is it not clear what the setbacks are?
Sure.
If this is a deck or not onto the house?
Absolutely. Starts from left to right.
What's not clear to you, I don't understand.
22... 20... First off, it doesn't look like it's the measurement of 22 feet, plus or minus. What's plus or minus mean?
That's...
On the original... Let me finish.
Are we going for inches?
Let me finish.
Oh, yeah.
On your drawing here, it says...
We go for inches.
On the original drawing, it says 22.16 feet. We can... We don't go by plus and minus. It has to be an exact measurement, and it's...
This is a... This is an official...
That's not an exact measurement.
Engineer.
I don't care what the engineer... The measurement is not an exact measurement.
So, what you're saying to me is, instead of 20 feet plus or minus, in other words, you would like to see 20 feet 3/8 of an inch, or 20 feet 4 inches and 1/2 inches?
Exactly.
Are you serious?
Look...
Sounds completely ridiculous to me.
Just like it's on this drawing here, before the deck is put on it. It hasn't measured that way.
This is not what I drew up. This is a professional, it is an engineer. I don't understand.
And if I may, the purpose of the code and the way that it's written is because it is submitted to the building... The code enforcement officer in advance of a meeting like today, so that those changes could be reflected in your plan. So, if those were the... If the building inspector had reviewed the particular plans...
He did.
Again, we would have to have some sort of determination that it's appropriate from the building inspector, but again, that's why it's done in advance of a meeting before tonight, so that any of these logistical issues are...
Okay, well, the building inspector did review everything, and he had to sign off a denial because of the setback, the only reason why. Accepted the plans. There was only a difference with the setbacks. Okay? Now, what you're talking about here is unbelievably splitting hairs for a completely simple deck that's straightforward with all these paperwork. It's just, I don't understand how there is an issue of what I need to do now specifically that's not exactly drawn here. Anybody, do you look at my survey? It's not as detailed as that, but it's an official survey.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it is possible to condition, if the board saw fit throughout this process, to condition the approval on making the appropriate changes that are acceptable to the board members to the plan that's filed with this particular...
Yes, because exactly...
...map. So, that is something that could be done. I mean, again, it is... He does have a plot plan. It was reviewed by the building inspector or code enforcement officer. I understand from the secretary for the zoning board of appeals that he did review the plans as submitted, and at this time, if that were the only obstacle that were before the board, that is, those particular specifics, the inches, as members of Sestona indicated, and those specific marks could be revised, and it could be a condition of approval. They wouldn't receive approval for this variance until those particular changes were met to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer.
Thank you. And as far as fractions of inches and inches are concerned, surveys change when the earth moves all the time, from one decade to another. That's why you need to recertify when you have official business, because those lines do move. So, we're talking inches here. That is, to me, that's getting really... Kind of like NASA to me, you know? That's like... I understand being exact and professional and legal, and that's everything I'm trying to do here. But to me, it seems like I'm pushing uphill on this thing.
Well, you're not pushing uphill.
And like the gentleman said, it makes a lot of sense to me.
And we tried to help you. We were very... I think we were very gracious to you the last time. We explained everything to you.
Right.
It was a good time. Didn't I explain every single step to you?
Yes, and that's why I believe I've had everything ready.
When I'm looking at something here that says 20 feet plus or minus, plus or minus what? Plus or minus a foot? Plus or minus two feet?
That's a standard trade thing. That's why every architect plan that I look at, when I'm a builder, I go through plus or minuses all the time.
This is the first time I've seen it on a survey.
Excuse me?
First time... I've been doing this for 20 years. This is the first time I've seen it on a survey. I've never seen it on a survey, plus or minus. On building... On building documents, absolutely.
Right.
Never on a survey. It's always to the inch or to the fraction of an inch.
Okay, so, again, this is a stipulation that's really dragging feet to me. That's my personal opinion. Like the gentleman said, I'd be willing to agree with that. It makes a lot of sense, even to push this off even further, and you don't convene in December. But as a matter of inches, I would say that is... That is the only argument, you know, that's like, can we move on forward with that and then take care of that at a later date?
Well, the board can't make an approval without knowing the specific... What the board is indicating is they have to have a setback and number, and it has to be... They have to be granting a specific variance. They can't just grant a conditional variance on what they...
Okay, so...
So, it has to be the specific...
So, are you...
That's what we're getting at, is that...
Okay.
That because these numbers are not, as members of Sestona indicated, specific on the plan...
Right.
As to the exact variance required, that's what they're requesting.
Okay, so, my question would be then, would anything, if it was up to 11 inches more or less, would you either deny or not deny because of those inches?
Possible.
Possible?
Sure.
Okay, and what would be the possibility? And what kind of case could you give me a scenario which would make sense of that? Because this all has to make sense.
Sure.
Just not an arbitrary decision.
We're not on trial here.
I understand that. That's why I'm asking questions. That's all I'm asking. How do you know how this operates?
All we're saying to you is you have to give us an exact measurement, because that gets written into the resolution and gets attached to your deed.
And that is why I paid somebody, and I thought that was done. I thought I was successful. How am I supposed to, I'm not an engineer, sir? Now, I just find this out now.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to correct this. I could call him up and find out.
Well, then, you should work with us and not bite our heads off and tell us we're doing something wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I apologize if you feel like I bite your head, because at no means am I any... Anyway, trying to do that.
Yeah, I understand. I understand you're upset.
It's just very frustrating for me, and I'm trying to understand this so we can move forward.
We've already changed the meeting to make it so you... We've been working with you.
Yes, I agree. I didn't say you haven't been, but it's that... The way this is presented to me, it seems like...
And you're telling us that we don't know our jobs, and I really appreciate it.
I didn't say that, sir. Please don't mistake me.
That's what you're inferring, and I don't appreciate it.
You're putting words in my mouth. I did not... I'm sorry if you... Again, I'm sorry if you took it that way. I would never infer that.
Yeah.
Never. That's not my personality whatsoever, especially for something simple like this. You know, I'm trying... I'm trying to get this done.
Okay, we can give you...
And I will do anything it needs to get this done.
Now, we can give you a million examples, okay, as far as that goes. I mean, we've had people... We just had one recently. A porch, it was a... A porch was in existence, and they were gonna put a certain roof over. We had to cut the roof back because it was six inches over, okay? So, yes, it does make a difference.
Right.
Okay, if we say we're gonna give you 20 feet and 2 inches, that's what you're gonna get. You're not gonna get 20 feet and 3 inches. I built my home, I had 30 feet exactly from each sideline. The building inspector came down and measured to the inch. Now, if I was an inch over, an inch under, he would've made me take the foundation down. So, it's to the inch. It's not plus or minus. We can't accept that. I can't. Now, if anybody else in the board... Can anybody else accept that? You know, I'll put it up to the board.
No.
So, nobody here is gonna accept that.
The bottom line is very simple. I need a survey by a licensed surveyor, a professional person, showing the placement of the property and the meets and bounds of the property, and where specifically the house and/or deck is shown, and the amount of variance needed from the property line. These are sketches.
Okay, I wasn't told I need a survey. From a survey, I was told that I needed a scale drawn...
You should've been told by our officer, Mr. Donahue.
Mr. Donahue?
Yeah, did he go through all...
He went through all this with me. In fact, he gave me information. He took a copy out of his own page.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt this briefly...
Well, it's always been our...
It isn't required to have a...
It's always been our procedure to follow, to make sure that we were very definitive in terms of where the placement of the house and the deck is.
I understand.
Now, any... These are sketches. I don't... I can't make... I know what they are. I know what the variances are here, but I don't know with the... It's not certified by a engineer and/or...
It is, sir. It is. We have the copy here with the stamp on it.
We're going back and forth.
He's not understanding then, because he's...
I'm trying to... I'm trying to help you, sir.
He's been doing this for 20 years.
All right. You understand.
But this is a routine matter that we have a lot of experience in, and quite frankly, we do minor variances this all the time. But we'd be more specific in terms of what you want and what we can make a decision on. I find I would feel very uncomfortable to make a decision based on these sketches, and that's what I consider... These are very... They're not certified.
Those are the ones I made, and they are sketches, sir, the ones you're looking at now. The other one is a certified one.
And again, if I may, Mr. Chairman, they're not required to be certified by a licensed professional engineer. They're just... They are... They need to satisfy... They need to show physically what the existing structures are on the property, and it needs to be a plot plan. And it is, in fact, a site plan, and it does show, in a sense, what they're requesting, but there are changes that could be made to reflect all of these concerns that should be... And should be, you know, ultimately should be made, because it would show the specific variance requested and the exact footage. But all of that would be memorialized, again, in the resolution and would be a condition of any such approval that the board... If the board saw fit to move ahead this evening, those are all pieces that could be readily revised. But a certified plan is not required, at least within the code's requirements.
And, sir, may I be correct, but the board could move forward if they decided to tonight with those stipulations?
Again, it's not... That's not... You can use that word if you like, but it's the board's determination if they have the appropriate information to consider your application.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying that.
They have to determine that your application is complete before we can move ahead. And if this is information that they determine that is not complete, then that's something that should've been resolved with the building inspector slash code enforcement officer prior to the meeting, so that they would have the appropriate information before them this evening, which, again, I don't have that information from the code enforcement officer. I don't have a letter saying that I reviewed these plans, these plans are sufficient, but again, the code only specifically requires the certain number of copies, which there aren't enough of this evening, and then showing the location of the existing and proposed structures on the lot, which, again, it's showing the existing and the proposed, it doesn't say more specifics. So, again...
Right, and that is what the building inspector, Mr. Donahue, had a long conversation with me. He even took a copy of a picture out of his personal code book to help me out, to try to explain myself to what you said. But I did pay somebody to do these, and it cost me hundreds of dollars to have it done, and that's why I'm a little frustrated that it wasn't done to your satisfaction, because I paid for this. It wasn't like I dragged my feet and I did it myself downstairs, sir.
Well, I'm not looking to have you incur any extra expense.
Right, I understand.
But there are things that we have to follow.
I completely understand that.
And we have to go by.
And I'm getting a lesson here.
And we're not gonna make any exceptions for you or anybody else.
I completely understand that.
As long as you understand that. I'm gonna leave it up to the board, the board to feel that they can go ahead with this, and you wanna wait until it's all verified or... What more would you need? Let me ask you. Let's start.
What more would you need, Mr. Savodik?
Other than an exact measurement, I'm happy with this. Other than exact measurements.
But on... Go ahead. On further review of the application, I noticed that you didn't fill the application out completely.
As far as what, sir?
As far as the five factors are here.
Oh, and again, this is another misunderstanding, because the building inspector told me those are questions that I would be getting asked to be prepared to answer those questions.
No, this is something that we require as the board to make sure the application is complete, and the five factors are not complete.
Again, I was unaware...
He told you what?
They have to be complete.
He asked you to ask these questions?[1208.25]
Yes, he said be prepared to answer these questions. Those are the questions that you are going to ask me.
This form is given to an applicant so they could read it and you put your answer down.
And I did send that in and filled it out and nobody told me last time. I definitely would have had that filled out this time. I asked if anything else we need.
Yeah. Now, this is, these are important factors. This is in the event, in the event that should ever go to Article 78, the judge who reviewed our applications puts a lot of credence to these five factors. And if they're not made out properly and they're not, don't make sense, then we can't, we can't make a decision in this, in this particular issue. But they have to be made out and made out completely.
Okay. Well, the questions he meant to ask you, we would ask you to your answers.
Okay, because you did ask me those questions in the last meeting we had.
I know, no, we didn't ask all these questions.
It seemed like to me you definitely asked it, but I might be misunderstood, understanding.
Let's, let's. Request that you please complete Factors 1A, 1A through 5 below and submit with your application. So it is directly in the application.
I definitely do that.
To help you out as much as we can.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, we can't just throw out a rule.
I want to apologize to you because of the fact that it's the second time you've been here. And this issue is, it's a simple issue. There's no question. There's nothing complex about the issue itself.
I asked people like Tina herself, is there anything else I need? You got everything here? And I thought I submitted everything that was needed and I waited weeks. I could have done all of this more, anything else that was needed of me. I'm more than willing to do it. You could see, anything I was asked for, I tried to present the best I could. It wasn't like I'm missing anything here that I know that I'm missing. I mean, those questions need to be answered. I could have done that last night even if I was aware that they had to be answered like that. I didn't read it again. I thought we moved forward against that because it was accepted.
Let me just explain two provisions that are in the code, one of which is the board needs to make a completeness determination as far as your application can concern. It is not complete without the answers to the questions. That goes without saying.
Fine.
However, the other changes are quite minor to your site plan and could be done pretty much readily. Generally, the board's procedure has been to, even if you were to have your public hearing tonight, it would be the subsequent meeting where it would be approved. The chairman has made a strong effort in order to help expedite these meetings and we can help, if the board determines tonight that they want to not deem it complete and go through the public hearing process for the subsequent meeting, we can make sure that a resolution is readily prepared and ready to be executed at that time. So that you would be ultimate, if the board so were to approve your area variance request and you'd have your application complete, public hearings complete, at that time, you could go ahead and move ahead with your application to get your building permit.
Thank you for the explanation.
I have something else. This is the first time I've ever seen a school tax receipt as, submitted as proof of, of ownership. Is that?
That's what they told me at the county, ma'am. I went to the county to get her proof of that and she says, here, I said, my tax, that's it? That's it? That's what they need?
Not the.
I drove to the county, used to go up for work to do it, and that's what they gave me for that.
In certain situations, sometimes it takes the county a while to even get a deed fully prepared. So if it's showing on our tax roll that he owns a property, if it's, it's pretty, it's pretty relevant to if he even had a copy of his deed. I don't know if the copy of the deed even means anything. It's just a proof of ownership or a form of proof of ownership.
Some boards require certified copies of deeds, but then that's specific to their code. This code does not require a certified deed.
I have a copy to page from the county.
But we discussed this at the last meeting as well and we said that a printout from the code enforcement officer showing that he owns the property on our property records was sufficient enough.
We don't have that though.
Yeah, you do. You have.
That's a rumor. We don't make a decision based on that.
Tax, it's a tax.
This?
That's not important.
That's a school tax.
No, they're the school tax. Didn't Mary Ann print out a property tax paper for you? It was her screen printout of.
Uh, no, Mary Ann didn't have it. I went to the county and got it. I came here and she didn't have it. She goes, I don't know. I don't have it. So then I chased myself off to the county and I got the copy.
How long have you owned the property?
Uh, it was two years in August, I believe.
I mean, that's a minor. I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, it, it.
Yeah, no, I'm, we're not trying to, we're not trying to, believe me, we're trying, we helped you, if anything. Last meeting, let's, let's back up here a second.
Okay. He's got a copy of the deed as well.
Right. When we had a meeting last year, we put on both, we were gonna, we were gonna do the, the, um, application review and the public hearing together. We don't normally do that. Okay? So we want to, we've gone out of your, our way for you.
I appreciate it.
I know that. But you're, you're standing here like we're at fault. We're not. Okay? These are things you're gonna need. Now, if there was some misunderstanding between the, us and the building department, we'll have to look into that. Okay? But we're the variance department. We're not the building department.
I understand.
Whatever you put, you put, you build it with lumber, you build it with, you know, cardboard, I don't care. That's the building department. But we're variance and we have to know to the inch. It does, not plus or minus. Okay?
I understand.
Now, this, I guess, let's, we'll put it, tell him what he's gonna need, right? Well, I'll go over it, but before you leave, I want you exactly sure that you know and we all, all in agreement of what you're gonna need. And then next month, we'll do it next month and we'll do the public hearing.
Yep, we'll have the notices out again for the public hearing for the.
And do that. Now, could we have the app, have his resolution repaired?
Yep. And if we, again, any change, any discussion that's had by the board at that time, the board would review and then ultimately could be executed by you.
All right. Now, that's up to the board.
Right.
Now, we, we had this, I'm just, we had this once before where I tried to get it, moved up where we could get it done. And the board agreed that that's not the way they want it. They wanted to done, they want, they want to review the application and I understand that and I agree with that.
Correct.
So that's another thing we have to look at.
We would submit that to the board the evening after the meeting so that they'd have it immediately for their review.
Right, because we tried this and we, it didn't work. All right, so we're gonna have to postpone it till next month. Okay, which is November, I think it's, let me look up, see, 10th. Now, let's, let's get through what we need here. Okay, so we'll, write it down. Okay, thanks. Now, this site plan here, or that's what it says. This is a site plan. It doesn't say anything else. Okay? We're gonna want the exact dimensions, right?
Needs to show your setbacks.
Setbacks.
These are all things that should be coordinated directly to with the code enforcement officer, but it should show the setbacks, your requested side yard variance and ultimately what you can have. Oftentimes, they'll put a box in the, in it, on a plan that says, this is what the code says, this is what I'm requesting, this is the variance that's necessary. And that also helps just for visual purposes, but if that's, again, a way that, as long as it's shown on the plan, exactly the area variance you're requesting, that's.
Okay, so we would need instead of 20 plus or minus feet, 22, you need like 20 feet, three and a half inches, whatever it is, 22 feet like that. That would be a specific change.
Just like in your original survey.
On your orig, you see how your original survey, not that one, but the original one?
Right.
See how, how it's written and it's.
Right, 24.98, right. And I have no idea why he didn't do this. That's why I pay him, he's the professional.
I don't understand why he didn't do it either.
I have a question. I'm a little confused. So I just want to make sure so that if he calls with any future questions or anything like that, when you say exact dimensions on the plan, now I know Taylor was reading over that it doesn't necessarily have to be a stamped plan, it can be drawn in. Can he take this and draw in the exact dimensions or are you, I just want to be very clear on what we're reading.
I don't know who's gonna draw it in, so I'd rather have it stamped by an architect. I know who drew it in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'll have him do it and sign an addendum to it that he actually did.
I know, I mean, I don't know. I'm not saying he's gonna go, the judge, he's gonna go home and draw it in, but you know, I want it signed.
And put in the inches.
Right.
And then built the, got the approval, built the item, the building inspector goes over and measures it and it's wrong. And then what happens? They're either before us again or they have to tear it down and rebuild it.
Right, well, that's why I have him.
And we don't want that to happen to you.
Make an amendment to it.
That's right.
And have him confirm with the code enforcement officer. And if you really want to go above and beyond, have the code enforcement officer confirm that. But again, just showing that it's, they need to know the variance you're requesting because this doesn't, it doesn't actually show.
Right.
And as, as you said, put what the setback is and what the requirement is so that we can.
And what you're requesting.
Yeah.
And what you're requesting. So it's just like your survey has, your house. Your house is this 24.98.
Right.
Okay? And that's what it has to be. Okay? It doesn't say plus or minus.
Okay. That's definitely his professional error.
That's number one, right? Now, do you understand that?
Yes, I completely do. I wanted the specifics on that.
Okay, you're also gonna have to fill out the five, um, uh, factors, okay? Which you have. You have the application that, that, you have that form. So, and then when you come back, then we'll go get your answers and then we question you on your answers if we have any concerns. That's what, that's what he probably meant by being questioned.
Right. Yeah, he's trying to prepare him because I didn't know what I was gonna get into here.
Now, are you satisfied with the ownership on it? I mean, does anybody, is any, anybody else needs here?
He has the deed, right?
He's got a copy of his deed.
Yeah, well, let him send a, let him give us a copy of the deed.
He can give me that and put it right in my file now.
Do you own, you didn't have that?
No, it wasn't in your package.
Yeah, for some reason.
What we looking for, right, you said, document type D?
Yep, that's the deed, that's the copy.
That's the copy.
So I can take this off your list?
Yeah, and I believe, I thought I, I had that, you with those, the papers. Maybe I could call Mary Ann tomorrow and find out if she had it.
No, Mary Ann wouldn't have it. Everything was on the desk. Whatever I, I sent them was all paper clipped together.
Then no one else has the copy of the deed?
No.
Well, I apologize for that. You're supposed to have a copy of that. I just want it was in there.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That's all right. So, so what do we got? Three things?
Let me hold this down because it makes no sense. You have and if they don't have, I'm gonna make more copies or give it to everybody.
The important thing is that I have it.
Okay, so here you go. You have it.
Is that good enough for you guys? You don't need me to make copies of the deed and send it off to you? Do you want to review it really quick before I put it in?
No, just have it ready for next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. For the next, for the next one, which is, what's it?
So you're, so you're, you're gonna.
But it's also something I'm, it's one other thing I'm, I'm not sure on now.
Sure, go ahead.
Excuse me, Tina? I'm sorry, I need your attention for a second. When you said that I had the, the proper amount I was told to have with the copies and then I heard from somebody, I forgot who I was speaking to.
Six.
They said it was, but they have six copies. Don't we have six copies?
What happens is you gotta, I deal with a lot of different, so when you're calling me and asking me for how many stamp plans do I need, I told you two because typically we keep one in a master file and then the building inspector takes one, not thinking about, you know, because usually most boards are okay with the original stamp plans coming in because it's costly for an applicant every time they actually stamp a plan. It can sometimes depending.
You're paying for the stamp.
But it's not that I wouldn't have normally told you that. I just am so used to telling people two all the time, that I need two original stamped maps and then you gave the copies.
Copies two.
Which are normally fine. Most of the time, what people do though is they take this and then they photocopy with the stamp on it. Those didn't have anything on them. So it's just, you know, but I just needed two original as far as that goes. So I think that's where the mix-up was there, not having a photocopy of this actual red seal and original signature.
So you don't need original stamps, but just six copies of, six copies of the plans so that the board members can review them.
So that's what happened. It's the two originals I need and then the rest can be photocopied. But I guess he just copied them for you really quick without.
Would I, would I need those copies with the seal on it? You mean, I have one for?
Not for me.
No, that's what I'm trying to say. Do, okay, not, not, well, who do I need? If you need, you need copies, I should make five copies.
Make six copies. Make six copies of everything.
Okay. Well, I thought I had. What else do I need now? I don't need the copy of the deed anymore.
Just to be, be specific here, I need an original stamped copy.
Right, so I need the copy, what I have that of the original.
And then you can photocopy that.
Right.
They don't need the red stamps themselves. They just need to see that.
Right, I understand. Right, exactly. But they want all one that shows the stamp.
You're gonna have to submit me two again so that one can go in the other master file.
Okay, and that's why they know what they're looking at, the same thing.
Correct.
Yes, when you make copies for them, you can just photocopy that part of it.
Okay, understandable. So I need six copies with that photocopy on there with the new approved one and two originals for you.
All right, so this is three items, right? Three?
That's correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything, any other questions that he would need or anything else like that? I'm sorry? He's gonna fill out the five factors. He's gonna fill that out next time and you're gonna, and you're gonna make, have to make six copies of that and give us, give us that, bring that back.
Well, I hope we clarified everything for you so that we know it's understanding.
We don't get me wrong.
Bring this matter to a conclusion at the very next meeting.
We're not here to hurt you. We're here to help you. We're not gonna have to do things legally. We always do when that's the, we're gonna handle it.
I understand. That's why I'm here.
We don't make any exceptions.
Right, I understand. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm here each time.
All right. So that'll be November 10th, 7:30. Now, if you have all that, here's what's gonna happen. So I don't want you to get excited again. Here's what's gonna happen, okay? It's gonna happen. We're gonna go through the application. If we have everything, we're gonna close that. We're gonna say the application is complete. Okay? And then we're gonna go to a public hearing. Okay? And if anybody's here who has any complaints or they don't want it or something like that, they're allowed to speak. Anybody's allowed to speak at a public hearing for it, okay? Then we're gonna close that. Then we'll vote on whether to approve the variance or not. Now, normally, you'd have to wait a whole month until the next meeting, until the resolution was completed. The attorney's gonna go out of his way here for us and he's gonna make the resolution. Okay? Now, it's up to the board that night. Does the board want to take the time to read that resolution? Now, if they don't, then you're gonna postpone to the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay?
And that'll be after December because you don't convene December.
That's correct, so it wouldn't be till the end of the year.
It's gonna be very similar to this resolution.
Well, yeah, if you said they have it, we have one. We already made a draft, the attorney already made a draft, one and everything else like that. So we have it.
Thank you for your help.
I don't foresee, you're, you're in good position with it. We already have the okay from the county as far as that. We got that, that's proven. You guys, so you've got some lawyers and neighbors that are in favor and all like that. So you're in good shape. You just have to get your paperwork together. Okay?
Okay, well, I'm glad it was made specifically clear to me because I would have had it if I would have been clear with it, but it's like, again, the first time I'm doing this and wasn't completely aware of what was requiring, but now I am.
All right, thank you very much.
But thank you for the clarification. It's very helpful.
We'll see you, we'll see you November 10th.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just all have a wonderful evening.
You too. Okay, next one is, uh, application is for completion. 72 Steuben Road, William. Yes, okay, not William, but somebody.
We're here to Mr. Stelma, Mrs. Stelma Carissa currently in Port Health.
Okay, one more up here. Just identify yourself.
Yeah, I'm Kathleen O'Driscoll. I am Mr. Stelma's Realtor. I'm a pool here, I'm his Realtor. His house is on the market.
Excuse me, uh, microphone.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Kathleen O'Driscoll. I'm Mr. Stelma's Realtor. And this is Lois Will.
I'm Lois A. Willhomsen. I'm the architect.
You're the architect, okay. You gave us the plan we need.
I was hoping you'd say that when we got up here. Good. So we are here representing Mr. Stelma. He's been the owner on record for 42 years. This, when he bought the home back in 1972, the home did not have a garage and he installed a shed, a nice sized shed on the property. And we put in an application with Mr. Donio.
This is his house and here's a copy of the, of the shed on the same property, just so you can get acquainted.
You have six copies?
No. No, I have six copies of, I do.
Okay. This, this shed has been here a long time.
Since 1972.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I just ask, ask you something?
Yes.
And this is, I have a reason behind this. Can you prove that it was built in 1972? And can you prove that the setback in 1972 was five feet?
Mr. Donio, I thought he included something with the application. He can, he called me specifically, Mr. Donio probably to tell me that.
The reason why I'm asking this so that you understand this. If, if this was built before the, the line changed and you can prove it to us, you don't need a variance. We will, we would just say, say to you, this is pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
Have a nice day and void this.
I don't know that we, I don't know. I'd have to ask, talk to Mr. Stelma.
I think he, there's a copy of a old zoning injury put in here, I believe. Probably it was from Mr. Donio.
That's, yeah, Mr. Donio had put that in.
Uh, where was it?
He found the wording.
Yeah. Goes back, it stated April of 1977.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see. It says regards to, it's zoning law, town of, to be enacted, town board, the town filings. This was built before 77?
Yes, 1972.
Yeah.
Seventy-two, okay. I'm just trying to find where it says what, what the distance was.
Oh, he has it highlighted. Is this it highlighted in yellow?
Where's that? Old accessory buildings?
24.48. Oh, it doesn't, can you prove that it was built before in, in 1972?
What type of proof? I mean, I don't know.
You're, you're saying this, you must have some sort of evidence of the fact.
Well, just what Mr. Stelma, yeah, the owner, his testimony.
Because if you can prove it to us, I would be for voiding this tonight and then you can go on your way.
Yeah, that would be the best.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you one way we, maybe we could do it. On the survey, in the engineer's survey, it says plot section, it gives us a plot section block and, you know, what, and it says info taken from a survey by J. Wilbur Irish, Silver Engineering Surveyor, 1906 South Street, Pittsburgh, dated August 14th, 1967. So at 67, it shows that the shed was on there. You understand what I'm saying?
But it also has an update on 7114 right here.
Right.
You know, I see the date's there. I see, I'm a little confused myself.
Yeah, well, he's saying, it's taken from a survey of 67. So I guess he's saying that it was there in 67.
It's not on this one.
You understand what I'm saying?
It's not on the original one that we had.
It's not on this survey that I had referenced.
It's not on that one?
Did you write this?
Yes, I, yes. Yes, I, I wrote the credit to the original surveyor.
So this original survey for 1967?
In 1967, it was not on there yet because Mr. Stelma had told me.
Built it in 72.
He built it in 1972. He, he might have some, maybe he has some receipts of building materials or what have you or maybe if he had somebody build it.
Because it's to your advantage not to get a variance.
Yeah.
Right.
I did have some old pictures. I don't know where they are right now. I had some old pictures that if they had the date on the back of, I mean, an old photograph that, you know, how they used to have the date, if that, would that be suffice if it showed?
That's up to the board as well.
It looks exactly the same as it did back then. I'd have to look for those photos though.
That might work.
I don't know if they're dated.
Well, it still would be, it would still not be till next meeting anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Can I make this adjustment, Mr. Chairman? To me, this is, this is complete.
Right.
We can deem it complete and put it on for next meeting. And if they can find proof by next meeting, we can still void it, can't we?
Great.
That would be perfect because, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a great suggestion.
And if we can't find proof, then what is the course of action? What do we need to do?
Well, no, it'll be nothing. It'll be, we'll have a public hearing, you know, I don't think there'll be anybody here. And we'll call it a public hearing and then we'll get a resolution, you know.
Would it have to go for another month or could it be approved next month? The only reason I have.
I tried to do this.
I have the other side who has a buyer waiting to, you know, purchase the house and.
I know, I know.
And if I, before we address that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a, I don't personally have a complete set of the application.
Are they supposed to have five factors as well on their application?
Right.
I don't see, I don't know if you guys have anything.
Did you submit a full copy of it? We just don't have a full copy of, because it only has the cover sheet. It doesn't have the five factors included with it.
What are the five factors?
It is a required submission. It's the same as the.
Oh, the deed and.
No, 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 that's, those are other submissions. But with your application form, which is, so that's your building, building permit, but there's a zoning board of appeals application form in order to get on the agenda. So this cover sheet you have, but then you don't have any of the subsequent.
What, there are other questions like they.
You mean the form that I put in with Mr. Donio that was?
Yes.
So this form you're talking about?
Yep, I only have, right, so there's page one, where the, right? So there's somehow a page.
The first page of this?
Because it, well, the, the application itself has the cover page. It has the, the second page, it looks like you have, which is question number one, two, three. Variance. I'm not sure what, oh, there's that.
Yeah, you have any more?
So there's that, you have that page, that requesting that information, but then you don't fill out the variance questions.
Okay, yes, okay.
So I don't have that.
So those, you need those all.
Correct, so you need to, I, I don't know what page of the exact application it is.
You know, I had asked, when I was at the, the, the office that time, they said, just go to the meeting and they'll tell you what you need. So.
Well, I wish I had told you beforehand.
Yeah, I didn't realize this had to be all filled out.
That's that page, that is that page.
Okay, because we would have filled that out.
Those are the requirements that the board needs to consider in order to issue an area variance.
Yeah, he told us to fill that out so to come in, so we'll just.
Understood, yep, understood.
Do we, I can get that filled out tomorrow.
Do we have a deed or other people's ownership on this? Because I don't have it in my.
We also need a copy of your deed.
We'll need it. It doesn't need to be certified, just a copy of your deed, which can be obtained from Orange County, the tax office there and they, they can certainly provide that to you by fax.
And I also need a list of adjoining properties. And the, yeah, I need their, their information, the property owner's information.
Just the adjoining ones?
The adjoining, um, and.
Three hundred or five hundred?
Five hundred.
Radius or?
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet?
And if the neighbors send a letter, they're saying it doesn't bother them, that helps you too, if you know anybody, if anybody, because, you know, I'm, I'm from Continental Village myself. Sometimes people get testy, you know what I mean? But I can't imagine that.
We spoke to the ones next door and they're.
They're most directly in.
Well, prepare for that.
They had gotten a variance at one point.
They don't have to bring them to the meeting or you could bring them with you as well. Or you could get, have, they could have them mailed in.
Yeah, if somebody gives you a letter, just say, well, I have no problems. Next door neighbor says, I have no problem with the shed there.
It's just again, the suggestion.
You know, it would just be a, a simple letter and you could give it, come and bring it to us when you come to the meeting.
To the, to the neighbors?
Anybody. Mostly, mostly, mostly the one next door or something, which would affect the, on the side of the property where the shed is located.
Right.
That would be this one right here.
Yeah, right, that's all. But, so you got two things here. We, we, we'll set it for the public hearing, but if you can come, show us that it was built beforehand, you know. Maybe even show when we built, would be, had the purchases, when he built it or something like that, you know, from the, maybe you could find the old records of, you know, maybe when he purchased it or something like that. We don't have to go through all this. Well, we're gonna have to prepare you because I understand you're trying to sell it and we're trying to help you to, to do that. So you're gonna, there's two options for next month, is what I'm saying. One would be for a public hearing. And if you have this, we'll, we'll direct, address it beforehand. If you can bring us some kind of proof, we'll go to beforehand, then we don't need a public hearing.
Okay.
All right.
So either way, we might, I have to come back here next month.
November 10th.
Okay. November 10th?
November 10th, 7:30, November 10th. It's Monday.
If they, if they can prove, if they find proof that the shed was built before the zoning, do they need, they.
Do we need to wait a month?
Yeah, that's.
What, what we have to do is say that it's, it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Uh-huh. We have to do that in a zoning.
And we'd have to vote on that.
Oh, we do, all right.
Void on, then we void this and send it down to the building.
Oh, okay, so that, so they do have to come back.
So we have to come back.
All right.
Just to protect themselves, it's good that they be here.
November 10th, Monday at 7:30, same, same time, same place. All right. Are you any questions now? I don't want you going out and doing now.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear. We have to fill out the five, the five points and I'll get that back to you. Proof of, if we can find the proof, that will help greatly, yeah.
I don't know if he's erected himself.
Then we wouldn't have to go through these other details. But if we can't find it, we need the deed, we need the five points filled out.
Then she wouldn't have a variance.
List of the adjoining properties, if we can get a letter from the adjoining properties, that would be helpful. And, okay, I think that's it to you.
Now, they make sure that you comply with the five factors on the application.
Okay.
I, I don't have a copy of that here.
No, and I, yeah.
I have a clean copy here.
You got a clean copy?
I have a copy, a blank copy. For some reason, I didn't think it had to be filled out. Okay.
Very important. It helps us make a, a more intelligent decision for one thing. And then again, if it should ever go to Article 78, that's what the judge will look for immediately. And that's what, we are bound by the answers that you put on that application in respect to those quest, five questions that are asked. So we've got to make it sure, make sure they're clarified, make sure they're very definitive and there's no further questions on our part.
More information, better, right?
Process of this application.
You can give Tina the, get her contact, you can give her the names and addresses of the people and everything. She'll send, she'll send out.
I do.
She'll send out notices. Well, if we have a public hearing, we'll need one for you. But you need the name and address of the person.
Okay, we can hold on to that.
She'll give you, she'll give you her number or like that. And she'll, and she sends out the notices so that people know, you know, that it's a public hearing.
Is there a tax map that we can draw to scale in the 500 foot radius to determine who gets contacted?